Welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. If you will please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance, we'll get out on our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Hinckley.
I am present.
Deputy Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Councilmember Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gottschul.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiling.
Here.
I'm present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Steve, Mr. Brown, do you have any changes or additions to the agenda as presented tonight, sir?
No, sir, Mayor, I do not.
Any from the diets? So, next item on the agenda would be our presentation of the fiscal year 2016-2017 City of Wixom financial audit. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Brown, and you can introduce your guests here this evening from our wonderful accounting firm, Plant Moran.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have the presentation of the audit tonight for our financial report dated June 30th, 2017. There's a presentation that's going to be gone over, probably referenced to some other communications that were included with the audit. And from Plant Moran, who has been conducting our audit for some period of time, we have Carter Doug Moore and Nicolette Adcho with us tonight to make the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Brown. Is that okay? Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
No, I can't. Tap it a couple of times.
That's why it's not there. Yeah, that's probably up there. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you to our audiovisual professional there. Just lock that.
That's good. I didn't want to think it was like electrical jolt to the building or prisoner testing or anything like that.
This is YTV.
Right. Jeannie Christmas.
Thank you, Mayor Hinckley, and fellow council members. We appreciate the opportunity to come tonight to present to you, as City Manager Brown mentioned, the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. I do have Nicolette Adcho with me. Nikki is the manager on the job. She's been involved in the Wixom audit for a number of years now. I'm a little newer to Wixom. You may recall last year Joe Heffernan was here. He had been the partner on engagement for a number of years. And last year, we jointly presented, and this year, he sent me on my own. And Joe is on retirement hiatus now, although we still consult with him periodically. Before I get started, I would like to thank City Manager Brown, as well as City Finance Director Stamper, in their respective departments. They were very helpful and instrumental in really getting us to this point here tonight to present the audited financial statements. The audit process actually starts back in the August timeframe, where we go through some of our initial planning and analytical reviews with the city. We meet with city staff and also have a consultation with the mayor, Mayor Hinckley, this year, with respect to the audit and planning for the audit and for identification of risks associated with the audit. So we start at that point in time. We actually come out and do the field work in late October, and we're here in December to present. You should have three deliverables in your packet. There's the audited financial statements. There's the graph package, which is up on the screen here that Nikki's going to walk through briefly. And then also, there's an end of audit letter, which I wanted to cover with you as well. If you haven't had a chance to look at the audited financial statements in depth, I would encourage you to look at the management discussion and analysis that's at the front end of those statements. That has a lot of good analysis of the completed audit year, and also some things around economic factors affecting the year that you're in now as well. So I think it's a pretty good synopsis of what the year looked like. As I mentioned, Nikki will cover at a high level some of the highlights that we wanted to present tonight, but just a couple of things with respect to the statements that she's not going to cover. First of all, I took a look at, what did you invest this year in the infrastructure, equipment, and water and sewer lines in the city? This year, that totaled around $5.5 million. Last year, that number's around 4.6, so over the last two years, you've invested over $10 million in your infrastructure. That's ahead of the pace of the depreciation on those assets, so to me, that's always a good indicator of fiscal health, is the ability to reinvest within your city. You were able to do that without actually incurring any additional debt. This year, you paid down a million and a half more of your debt that was outstanding. That was consistent with what you did last year, so you didn't take on any new debt, but you still were able to fund the capital items that you purchased this year and put into service. The city did manage within its budget. Overall, your revenues were very close to what your final amended budget was, and your expenditures came in in totality around 5% below what your final amended budget was as well. So you are managing within the resources that you've allotted for as part of your resolutions. The city's pension funding actually improved a little bit this year, about 2% from 52% to 54%. So it's a modest improvement, but it is still an area along with OPEB, and I know you've spent a lot of time looking at those the last couple of years. It really is, the legacy costs really are the main challenge here in Wixom, and it's not uncommon for that to be the case. I took a look at, just to give you a little bit of comparison with respect, in particular your OPEB, because I had data related to that. So on OPEB, as of the actuarial evaluation of June of '14, you were about 54% funded. When I look at the 47 communities in Oakland County, 62% of them are funded less than 40%. 23% are funded above 60%, and you came in right around 55. So you're kind of in that middle spot as far as positioning, but, you know, well ahead of the 62% that are 40% or below in terms of their funding levels. And I know that's something you're looking at a little bit later on your agenda, but I want to at least share that with you. I don't have similar data for pension, but I did have that for OPEB, so I wanted to communicate that. If you could, I'd like you to take a look at the end of audit letter, which is in the packet, because I like to walk through that before Nikki comes up and talks about the graph. So this is the backend communication on the audit. It really is the bookend of the frontend communication that went out regarding some of the things that we did on the initial planning side of the engagement. It lays out our responsibilities with the audit, what the city's responsibilities are, and I'd like it us to walk through that letter fairly quickly. If you turn to page two of the letter, so there are some things that we are required to communicate to those charged with governance, in this case, city council for the city of Wixom, and those include any internal control items. So we had two items this year. One is actually a repeat item, and we've talked with City Manager Brown and with the Finance Director Marilyn just about those items, and I know they have some actions in place to address these. But the first one is really a segregation of duties matter. It's really the fact that Marilyn has complete access, or administrative access, as we call it, to all matters within the city's IT system. And typically, you'd like to try and limit that type of all administrative access to IT personnel. Your finance directors typically do need to have significant access to the system, but there are some things that you'd like to just be read-only. And so, the creation of accounts she's able to do, the creation of vendors, as well as provide access to new individuals that could be introduced into the system. And so we've talked about that with City Manager, and again, this is a repeat item. And we have a plan in place, really, that I think will be instituted, that'll take care of this matter going forward. But that is something that we did need to communicate. We didn't find any issues in terms of improprieties in terms of the audit, but there is a segregation matter there that does need to be addressed. The second item relates to a couple of journal entries associated with the audit, which is under the caption "Review of the Accounting Records." So if we had, during the audit, if we identify any journal entries that are of significant in nature, we have to classify those either as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And it's really, it's a very small threshold in terms of what falls under that. So we had two entries this year that we identified as part of the audit. One, and both of these entries would be non-recurring items, somewhat unusual items in some respects. The first one had to do with the SAW grant that you drew down on. That is recorded in an enterprise fund, so as soon as you've actually incurred those costs and request the reimbursement, the revenue and the receivable needs to be recorded. It's not a cash basis grant, so that was, one of the entries was to record that revenue and receivable, even though it was collected beyond 60 days after year-end, because that doesn't, isn't applicable for enterprise funds.
Is that typically, even though maybe you're not using that grant, you know, within that, like, within maybe this fiscal year, maybe you're going to use it like next fiscal year? Does that still hold true to make that entry like that?
Yes, yes. Once you've incurred those costs that are available for reimbursement under the grant and qualify for that, and you request those funds, that's really when the receivable and revenue should be recorded. It's not when it's collected, it's actually when it's earned.
It's ongoing.
It's ongoing, correct. Yep, so that'd be one item.
Doug?
Yes, please.
You keep saying significant. What's the threshold?
It would be very little.
Well, you've used the term.
Entries about $15,000.
Okay.
Okay.
So anything over $15,000 was on?
Yeah, and it's a judgment call, but yes, that'd be the range.
I just wanted to understand what it was.
Yep. And then the second item, really related to, an item that you had budgeted for, and it was to use your LDFA funds to pay for some road improvements. And the LDFA did do that, and that was recorded just fine within the LDFA fund. On the government-wide statements, which are kind of the accrual-based statements, that needs to be recorded as contributed capital. So that piece of it was what our entry related to. The actual expenditure of those funds was just fine, and we looked at those expenditures within the LDFA fund. But on the government-wide, because those expenditures were benefiting another fund, in this case, the road funds, it has to be recorded as contributed capital. So those were the two entries that were found with respect to this year's audit. And again, both a little bit unusual, not anything related to what I'd call regular recurring items. On page three, this really walks through some of the responsibilities for the audit, our responsibilities in identifying risk, our responsibilities with respect to taking a look at your internal controls. We did perform the audit consistent with the scope that we had laid out in our frontend communication. There is one new disclosure in your statements this year that was required, and that's really related to tax abatements. And so if you were to look at your financial statements, that's found in Note 13, and it indicates that those abatements exist, and the dollar magnitude of those, this year that was around, in totality, around $90,000 in total abatements. Financial statements do have estimates in them. The two most sensitive estimates that we take a look at with respect to the statements are, one, really the assumptions associated with the actuarial computations for both your pension liability and your post-employment healthcare liability. So we do take a look at those, see, do they seem reasonable? Are they consistent with what we see with other communities? Are they consistent with what we see within MERS? And we did find those to all be reasonable. On page four, really just no disagreements with management, I'm happy to report, no uncorrected misstatements that didn't get recorded at all, and overall, the audit went as planned. Page five is really just a couple of related recommendations and/or legislative items on page five through the end of the letter. The main item to report, and this is one that we've talked about a little bit in the past, is that over the last couple of years, your pension liability, your unfunded pension liability, has been recorded on those government-wide statements, consistent with what you'd see in a commercial business. Starting next year, for your June of '18, any unfunded OPEB liability also would need to be recorded on those government-wide statements. So not the fund-based statements, not the general fund, but on the government-wide statements. And that will then get the city and many other communities really darn close to what a commercial business would look like in terms of having all liabilities then on the balance sheet.
Doug, a question for you. Is that expected to affect bond ratings when that becomes effective?
I don't believe it is, because the bond rating companies are really knowledgeable financial statement users, so even though that liability was not on the balance sheet, it was disclosed in your footnotes, so they have a good sense of the magnitude of that obligation already, and so I don't anticipate that to be an issue at all with respect to the bond rating companies. In the middle of page five is really a snapshot of what your net position, which is kind of your equity on your government-wide statements, will look like once that estimated OPEB liability is booked. And you can see on the unrestricted, it goes from negative 2 to negative 9 million. In total, though, your net position is still positive. And what that means is that cumulatively, you have funded all associated costs with the city. The nuance there is that you have capital assets in place that you've paid cash for that are on the balance sheet that have to be segregated within the fund balance area. That's the $29 million number, so you basically have already paid for those, even though they're not fully depreciated. But on the other side, you do have these unfunded legacy liabilities that are causing that negative unrestricted position. At the bottom of page five, just a reminder on administrative charges, and I know city management is looking at these and looks at those on an ongoing basis, just to make sure that the charges are commensurate with the value received when other funds are being charged. The last two items on there are really more from Marilyn. One is the F-65, and how that now needs to be filed with the state, and that's all going to be online now. Some communities were already doing that, but it's mandated now for the fiscal year ended June of '16, '17, excuse me. And then there is an updated Uniform Chart of Accounts coming out. The state dictates what chart of accounts needs to be for governmental entities. We're not anticipating there's going to be significant changes with those, but there'll be a few things that the city will have to implement in terms of new accounts going forward. But I don't think that's going to significantly impact your budget process or what your statements are going to look like. So with that, let me hand it over to Nikki and have her walk through the graphs, and we'd be happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
So the graphs are here to serve just as a high-level overview of the financial statements. So this first graph is the five-year trend of general fund revenue. Property taxes, which is the city's largest revenue component, decreased about 2% from last year. State shared revenue, the city's second-largest source of revenue, increased about 22% from prior year. That's primarily related to an increase in the LCSA reimbursement, which is the property tax, the personal property tax reimbursement. The swing in the other revenue is related to the equipment rental that's charged to the major and local funds. Historically, this was part of a reimbursement to the general fund for expenses that were paid on their behalf, which the major and local road funds are now paying themselves. So the equipment charge has been broken out. And then I also just wanted to point out that building permits is up about 12% just due to development in the city.
Have a question on the cable franchise fee.
Yep.
As we increase residents and decrease residents, does that, I can't remember if that fluctuates much over the year or the years?
Oh, I think that's the AT&amp;T video revenue, and I'm not sure, is that correlated?
Yeah, it's based on users' numbers.
So I'm saying, you know, we have 200 new residents across the street. They're not all going to go with cable. I mean, some of them are using Dish or whatever. So have you seen that fluctuate much in the last year? Do you anticipate it may?
It really does.
It's kind of pretty much right in that wheelhouse.
Yeah, I've seen, it's remained fairly steady. Actually, sometimes there's decreases because people are going with other carriers or different types of ways to receive their entertainment.
I just see a 281 in '15 and 275, so it's going down, when it should be going up.
Right. Yeah, if people are finding other ways of that entertainment.
Yeah.
Be it phones or Amazon or whatever.
Tablets or whatever.
Exactly.
Like we say, there may be a day. So I guess my point is, from the city's standpoint, let's say that drops by 40% in the next year, simply because people find other ways to find entertainment of television or whatever, through their phone, through this, some of these things you can plop on your window and pick up 50, 60 stations. And that franchise fee, is that, would we see a significant drop in that? And then secondly, would there be a cost to burden by the city? Because we should have this many people, and now we only have this many people.
Sure.
Okay. So then I guess my question is, maybe we should be looking at that contract. Just saying.
Isn't that the contract that we were told by the lawyers we had to sign?
Oh, yeah. But I'm just wondering for how long it is and what we're stuck to, and if, what I'll say, the membership goes down, and is the city left hanging for the void in the membership? Might be something you might want to look at. Just saying.
Mayor, we have seen, it's interesting you asked that question, because I asked that same question in another community. We are starting to see the cable franchise fees drop, and I think it is a combination of Dish Network as well as Netflix that's impacting that. A growing community, not seeing it as significant as one that's more mature. Your franchise agreement should have a clause in there, most likely, that allows you to look at the books and records of the cable company, just to see that the franchise fee base, that they're calculating that percentage off of, is consistent year-to-year.
Sure.
So that may be something to think about as well.
Thank you.
So this next slide is a five-year trend of your general fund expenditures. As you can see, public safety is the largest expense category in the city, increased about 8% from prior year, mostly due to personnel costs. The same holds true for the general government increase. There was an increase in personnel costs, including sick and vacation payouts. That public works increase is due to that major and local road reimbursement that's no longer there. So this next slide is the five-year trend of revenue and expenses compared to your unrestricted fund balance, which is the amount that's available to spend. So as you can see, the city has done a nice job of managing within its means. That unrestricted fund balance is increasing each year, a large portion of which is the budget stabilization fund's committed balance. So as the city looks at its needs for capital and legacy costs, you do have some flexibility with funding those. I'm not sure what happened. So this is six-year trend of the same information as the last slide, but for all of your governmental funds, many of which will have money specifically earmarked for certain things, so roads and capital improvements. But you can still see here that same trend with the fund balance increasing each year. This slide is a six-year trend of your water operations. This year, the water fund had a $300,000 decrease in their operating loss, which was primarily revenue-driven as rates were up, as well as the number of units filled. And then this next slide shows the same, the six-year trend of sewer operations, so same with water. There was a $300,000 decrease in the operating loss. Sewer disposal charges were also up during the year. The decrease in the unrestricted net position that you see, this line above, is mostly due because cash generated this year was used to purchase capital items. So as your investment in capital assets go up, the unrestricted portion of your net position will decrease.
I have a question. On the sewer side, with all these connects in the new residential across the street, shouldn't that be going the other way? I mean, I know, and again, I go back to when I purchased my condo and I went to sign on the dotted line, they go, oh, by the way, we need $2,000 more for the sewer connection. I'm like, oh, okay, I'll go get that. So I'm curious, you know, we had that, what I'll call a tax, for three or four years when I first moved in, and then it was, we got caught up, and then we were given, like, either you could get a $500, $600 check, or you could leave it in the fund, and we were going to initiate it again. And then, prior to clearance, Mr. Nowicki was here, we initiated again. So with all the condos and the houses that are being built, it seems like that should be going the other way.
Yeah, and I mean, generally, the tap fee revenue is going up. That is a higher number than what it has been in the past because of those connections, but because of the expense that we're putting into the capital asset, which is part of the SAW grant reimbursement, that we get a portion of that back. But that's why we show the decline, because we're bringing in the cash, but we're spending more on our capital assets.
And I recall, it wasn't actually called a sewer tap, it was like a...
It's a connection permit fee.
Yeah, essentially, yeah. It's essentially a tap fee.
Yes, basically, yes.
But I remember it was, we were still having, like, there was the downstroke, and then it was still getting taxed every year. And then it went away, and then it came back, so...
Yeah, so currently, that revenue line item is up from prior years. Absolutely.
It's continued.
Yes, as the development keeps going, it will continue to stay pretty steady.
Okay.
And the larger the business, you know, like, some of the larger businesses that it went in, those connection permit fees are obviously quite substantial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If you're in none, thank you very much for your attention tonight. Appreciate it.
Doug? Thank you. Thanks, thank you.
Any other questions on there? Back to our agenda, as the next item will be the approval of the minutes, the regular city council meeting of November 28, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any questions? Changes? Any of that good stuff? Doesn't sound like it. So I have a motion by Councilman Resnick, seconded by Councilman Gottschul, to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of November 28, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. We have no correspondence. And next item on the agenda would be our first call to the public. The rules for the call of the public are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call of the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence, and again, immediately after new business. The first call of the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence, and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on any agenda item on our first call of the Anyone wishing to address the council on the first call of the public? Seeing none, I will close the first call of the public. Next item will be the city managers' reports. The first one we have is the fire department report for October 2017. Any questions on that? Fire chief is here, and he's ready to answer questions. No? All right. You must have sat on Santa's lap there Saturday and asked for a couple of right things there. Okay, how about the police department report of October 2017? All right, no questions there. Finance department monthly budget and quarterly investment report, June 30th, 2017. What would you say percentage why your investments are up on this?
Investment earnings?
Mm-hmm.
Not, they're pretty steady. There's slight increase in interest rates, but...
5%?
No.
I was hoping you'd say 3.
No, probably a couple percent.
All right. Yes?
Regarding our mortgage-backed asset investments, is that amount or percentage that we have in there pretty standard with what other communities have, or do we have more or less invested than others usually do?
We don't carry a whole lot of those type investments. We have a variety that we keep at Robinson Capital, that they purchase, you know, like Fannie Mae and some different items, but they keep them fairly limited. We don't invest a majority of our money with those type of assets.
Okay. That's what I just, I recall seeing very many in there with percentages, what makeup is of our total investments.
Yeah, I'd have to look at what the percentage is of that. I don't have that on the top of my head, but I can certainly follow up with you to give you that percentage.
Yes, Councilman Resnick.
Marilyn, I think it was about two years ago, we updated our finance software, right? So with this new... So when this new chart of accounts come out, are we going to be able to migrate immediately, or does our software provider have to make a lot of changes?
Nope, it should be fairly easy, because when we went into the new software, we actually, at that point, migrated to the state chart of accounts that we had not been using prior. The modifications that they're making are just modifications to that existing chart of accounts. So it's just gonna be maybe some change in account numbers, some additional account numbers and categories that we'll have to use, but it'll be a much easier transition.
So a non-event, basically?
No.
Good.
No, just some minor changes.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
All right, anything else on the finance side of the reports? Okay, next item on the agenda, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler, and seconded by Councilman Kennedy, to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. Unfinished business, consideration of the enactment of a mandatory ordinance to the City of Wixom Code of Ordinances, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.020, Definitions, and Section 5.10.074, obstructing traffic in order to conform to changes in state law. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion on this? Yes, Councilman Gatchel.
Just wanted to say thank you for one cheap version, much cleaner, I think. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have a motion by Councilman Resnick, and seconded by Councilman Kennedy, to consider the enactment of a mandatory ordinance to the City of Wixom Code of Ordinances, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.020, Definitions, and Section 5.10.074, obstructing traffic in order to conform to changes in state law. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. New business, new business number one, recommendation to review the fiscal year 2016-2017 financial audit and authorization to accept and file. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Who was that support? Was that you, Pat? Me? Yes. Any more discussion on that, Rascal? Yes, Councilman Resnick.
Just a, you know, comment again, Marilyn, thank you, you and your team got through another audit unscathed. When I say unscathed, I mean the material findings, and in my book, that's something that's been there forever, about who has the keys to the castle. And sometimes you have to watch out what you ask for if you give it to a third party, and then someone says, "Oh, I need access to the AP portion of the general ledger," and you're not able to do it anymore, and we're gonna have to find the IT guy or whoever. So it's just a changing of the keychain from one belt to the other, so. But great job again, and I think the new accounting package has also helped in getting things straightened out, so, super job.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Smiley, and seconded by Councilman Beagle, accepting the recommendation to review the fiscal year 2016-2017 financial audit and authorization to accept and file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. New business number two, recommendation for approval for the formation of a Beck Road widening task force. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Was that you, Pat, again? Any discussion on that? Yes, Councilman Kennedy.
Can we get a little bit more information on this, and what exactly is MAC, when it says it's gonna be working on our behalf? Is there any charges involved with this, or how does that happen?
That's just an advocacy group that would have an opportunity to work on our behalf. I'm not aware of any charges that are provided by that company, or that organization, I should say, that we're incurring.
I would also add that being part, as a member of the city of the MAC, okay, and we've been a member for, I don't know how many years now, it's been quite a long time. But also keep in mind that going forward, as we move in a direction of widening, having the potential to widen Beck Road, that we already have an opportunity from a business owner along Beck Road that has, how should I say? He has committed to a significant amount of money that the city can use for, oh, let's just say acquisitions, if we need to acquire land acquisition along for right-of-way, if we need to possibly have the MAC on our behalf lobbying Washington to work for a Tiger grant, or there's several grants that are gonna be come forward at the beginning of this new year. And I'd like to add that that same group advocated and won a $12 million grant for Sterling Heights to widen, I think that's Van Dyke up by the northern end of it. So the good news is, is that having that, let's say, commitment from that business owner, that gives us a wealth of opportunity. So hopefully that helps you understand it a little bit more. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor has mentioned the idea of expanding Beck Road a few times in the couple of years I've been here, and it's, it sounds like a really, it would be a great thing for the city, very expensive, very big endeavor. I like the idea that we're gonna, I support this, that we're gonna, we're gonna take the first step in looking into as deeply as we can, finding what's out there, what will make this possible. This is a, this is a fine first step, there's, you know, no harm in us, you know, at least doing this, and hopefully it'll, it'll, it'll lead to getting it accomplished. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Resnick.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think that we should also, you know, continue to look for ways to work with the surrounding communities, because Beck Road, from its, you know, start in the north at Potter, all the way down to the south, goes through, I think it's five different communities. And I know that in the past, you know, some of these infrastructure grants and economic recovery grants, it's been looked down upon. We're Oakland County, you know, we just need to make sure we get access to as many of those as possible, so I think that's good that we have, you know, the MAC Alliance Fighting Force from Washington, and I hope we can get a lot of interest in this area and get some surrounding community help as well.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Smiley, and seconded by Councilman Beagle, to accept the recommendation for approval for the formation of the Beck Road widening task force. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. New business number three, recommendation to approve the renewal of the Cemetery Sexton Services Agreement with Huron Cemetery Maintenance Incorporated of Highland, Michigan, at the Wixom Cemetery, with this agreement being effective January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, as well as their fee schedule that is contained in appendices that accompany their agreement, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign this agreement on behalf of the city of Wixom. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Any questions? Jeez, we usually get a... Response to the cemetery, but I guess everybody's being good tonight. Okay, being that there's no questions, we have a motion by Councilman Smiley, and seconded by Councilman Beagle, to approve the renewal of the Cemetery Sexton Services Agreement with Huron Cemetery Maintenance Incorporated of Highland, Michigan, at the Wixom Cemetery, with this agreement being effective January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, as well as their fee schedule that is contained in the appendices that accompany their agreement, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign this agreement on behalf of the city of Wixom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very much. New business number four, recommendation for acceptance of the quitclaim deed for a right-of-way easement for Beck Road south of West Maple Road, as granted by MM Beck LLC of Farmington Hills, Michigan, in the total amount of $1. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support. Mr. Mayor, I do have one correction on that. It is 1,200 feet, not 60 feet in length. It's the entire length of the property.
You didn't do your gazetas?
My gazetas didn't help me there.
Didn't have that liquid cool calculator out today, huh?
I didn't, I took it out later.
Left it in the truck, it got frozen.
It was frozen. Sorry about that.
You know, I have to look at that, I'm not real sure. What's the location of that? Give me, I know it says, like, West Road.
It's Beck Road.
Beckwood, south of...
West Maple.
It's what they're building.
What they're building right now.
Right.
Isn't it?
Yeah, that...
It's Commerce, yeah, it's Commerce.
It's a commerce development, it's northbound Beck and eastbound Maple, is what we would call it, I guess.
So we got that extra turn lane now, and that's why we had to add it.
Yes.
That was my question, is it for the turn lane?
Basically for the turn.
Exclusively, okay.
And it also, it will also include the sidewalk there.
That was nice, they put that cobblestone look in there.
Turned out nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilman Resnick, and seconded from Councilman Smiley, to accept the recommendation for acceptance of the quitclaim deed for a right-of-way easement for Beck Road south of West Maple Road, as granted by MM Beck LLC of Farmington Hills, Michigan, in the total amount of $1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? New business number five, thank you, recommendation to accept a water main easement in the total amount of $1, and a detention retention system maintenance agreement, both granted by BKG Ryan LLC of Bingham Farms, Michigan, and authorize the mayor, Kevin W. Hankley, and the city clerk to sign the maintenance agreement. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion on that, Rascal? We're looking at it sideways up here, but it's the right... It's the right piece of property. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Resnick, seconded by Councilman Smiley, to accept the water main easement in the total amount of $1, and a detention retention system maintenance agreement, both granted by BKG Ryan LLC of Bingham Farms, Michigan, and authorize the mayor, Kevin W. Hankley, and the city clerk to sign the maintenance agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. New business number six, consideration of the confirmation of the mayor's reappointments of Robert Thompson and Jeff Isit as alternative to the board of review, with terms to expire December 31, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Both these individuals have served on the board review for the last couple of years, and so when I contacted them, they were both interested in renewing their appointments, so most of you probably know Robert Thompson, a great guy, and...
Doesn't he work at Duluth?
He does. He does. He's, yep, he does. Yes, he does. And Jeff's a good guy as well, so I'm excited to have them accept these reappointments, so... Any other discussion on that? I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler, and seconded by Councilman Kennedy, for the consideration of the confirmation of the mayor's reappointments of Robert Thompson and Jeff Isit as alternate to the board of review, with terms to expire December 31, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thanks. Second call of public, rules for the call of public are as follows. Public shall address the council during the call of public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence, and again, immediately after new business. The first call of the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. Persons should not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence, and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the second call of the public, which would be on whatever's on your mind? Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the second call of the public? Seeing none, I will close the second call of the public, and direct our attention to Mr. Brown. Any comments, sir?
Yeah, a couple of items that I wanted to make mention of from my city manager's update. First off, the passport acceptance, congratulations to our city clerk Cathy Buck, and to our deputy city clerk Christopher Alpolco, as well as Wendy Brink from my office, who were recertified for another year for the ability to process passports, which is a very popular service that we offer, that not many communities still offer. I just did some fancy math, not really fancy, I think it's about eight per day, it looks like to me that we're averaging, which is pretty intense, so. They stay pretty busy with that, and I think the people in town and elsewhere appreciate the service, and that's something I wanted to make mention of. Then the other thing I wanted to make mention of, we've got Ryan Court, note of thanks to the building department for outstanding service that was provided during the work to get their tenant in place at that location, which we discussed earlier in one of the agenda items. So I wanted to make mention of that as well. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention briefly, is something that we've been working on for a little while, and Doug Boer, our partner from Plant Rand, mentioned it a little bit. He went over the funding percentages for our pension and for our other post-employment benefit costs, the legacy costs that he referenced. We've been working at trying to prepare ourselves for evaluating the opportunity to bond for the unfunded costs that we have for pension and for the OPEB costs, and we have been diligently working at that. It's been going very slowly, and I wanted to provide a little bit of an update for you as to what's going on there. MERS, the pension provider, has completed their work in analyzing our amortization periods for the different employee groups that are part of our pension costs. They've prepared a schedule that's been passed on to the bonding consultants, PFM advisors, who are now going to prepare a very detailed, comprehensive package of information for mayor and council to evaluate, and I anticipate that we're gonna receive that shortly, at the first part of the new year. And once we do receive that and provide it to mayor and council, we're gonna look to schedule probably a special meeting to go over the prospect of bonding for those unfunded liabilities, and I think it looks very promising, potentially for both of them, more so for the pension side than for the OPEB side. With the spikes in costs that we could experience on the OPEB side, there's a possibility that it could become a little bit more complicated on that, but I anticipate that we'll have a nice package of information available to us from our consultants that are working on that, that we'll go over maybe in January, maybe in February, depending on the timing of it, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. It's just been kind of a slow process getting the information that we needed from the people that had to provide it. I was hoping to have that available to us a little bit earlier, but it's, it looks like it's gonna be the first of the new year. So I just wanted to make mention of that briefly. If you have any questions on that, I can entertain it, and I'll also provide information about when the PFM package is put together, and we'll look to schedule a meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, let's see here, I'm clicking through a couple different things. Council comments. Mr. Gatchel, Councilman Gatchel.
Just thank you for the update regarding the actuarials and finding out processes. I know that's something we talked about earlier today. That is all I've got for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a, uh, job well done in Maryland, uh, that, that, that report from Plant Moran, you know, we kinda talked about all of the, you know, things that popped up in it, but there were plenty of compliments in it too, and it was, uh, generally, uh, you know, a good audit, so. Uh, and as far as that keys to the castle, um, you know, you're, you're better off, you know, not being the sole person in power, than you'll be, you'll be the one who looks to something that happens. Anyway, thank you, Rascal.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Beagle.
Thanks, just one quick one, I'd like to congratulate the Fire Fighters Association on another great, um, Breakfast with Santa, and thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of it, it's a, uh, it's a great event, and the community loves it, and, uh, you guys do a great job with it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also wanna give kudos to our, uh, snow crew again, um, it took me forty-five minutes today to get to work, but it wasn't through Wixom, it's when I hit the border, I slogged along at six miles an hour through two neighboring communities, and, uh, good job by you guys. The, um, Christmas market, um, was a great event, um, I don't know how many people had a chance to get out there, but, uh, very well attended, um, weather was great, and the entertainment, and, uh, everything was, uh, really superior this year, had a lot of fun. Um, I spent most of the weekend there myself, my kids put me to work in their booth, but other than that, it, uh, it was fun. Uh, Breakfast with Santa, really enjoyed it, thank you for letting me participate again, uh, it's great to reconnect with the entire community, not being involved in the school system anymore. Uh, as an empty nester, I think that's one opportunity to be able to get a chance to see a good, uh, cross-section of the community coming through there in the Breakfast with Santa and get to chat with them for a few seconds each. So, great turnout, and you guys do a wonderful job, and thank you again. Um, passport, uh, clerks, great job. The, the one thing that people don't realize, and I've, I've sent about five people, uh, their way in the last three months, is that if you prepare the paperwork at a time, it's about a five-minute interaction, if you don't sit there and talk to everybody, if you prepare the paperwork there, it's only about a ten-minute interaction, so, uh, it's a great service, and, uh, you guys do a wonderful job at it. And, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, fire department, congratulations on another successful Breakfast with Santa, I heard about it, uh, it's always a great event for the city. Uh, thanks to everybody involved on the demolition of the house on Fairberry, I drove by it, uh, just as they were putting the straw out, uh, it was graded down, there is no garbage in that lot, uh, it, uh, it's a blight that's gone now from the city, and I'm sure a lot of residents, uh, appreciate all that you guys did for it, and I know you went through a lot of hoops on it, so, again, thank you for that, that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, um, also, I, I wanna thank Maryland and their office and Steve too, for all the work they did on the audit and, uh, all the work they've done throughout the year to, to, uh, end up with a, um, a, a good, healthy audit, so, we appreciate that. And also, I, I, um, the Breakfast with Santa is always one of, one of my favorite things to do, I, I, uh, really appreciate being invited and asked to help, and, uh, um, it's, it's, uh, I know that, that you guys do a lot of work for that, um, from, um, you know, starting the, the day before, setting up and all the prep work, and then the guys back in the back doing the pancakes and the, and the, uh, the ham, it's just, uh, a lot of work for you, and then we kinda stand up there, passing it out and get all the credit, it's kinda, kinda nice, but, uh, we really appreciate it, and thanks for inviting us out and, uh, being a part of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, I guess from, uh, my standpoint tonight, I just, uh, would like to thank, uh, Garen Stickel and, uh, David Connell for volunteering to be on, uh, this task force, I think it's gonna be a, a, a great opportunity for the city and, and having, uh, our mayor and our city manager and our, and our city engineer, uh, involved with, uh, you know, a truly what I believe will end up being a private, uh, public partnership, uh, when the time comes for us to be able to, uh, widen Beck Road, it's, uh, something I guess for me has been near and dear to my heart for a long time, just simply because businesses along that corridor have, uh, and, uh, I think, uh, many of us have heard this, some have not moved into Wixom because the roads have not been wider, or they've not been, uh, suitable for what they're looking for, and I think that if we're gonna continue to, uh, grow that particular corridor and, and add more businesses, and, and I know that that's on our radar screen, that, uh, not only for the businesses, but for our residents as well, um, uh, the widening of that is, 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 is a, is a big opportunity for us, it'll be, it'll be a challenge, but I think if we, uh, take advantage of the current administration and some of their infrastructure grants and that, that, um, I think we can lessen the burden that, uh, we may have to face ourselves as a city, so. Uh, with that, uh, I hope, uh, that, uh, everybody had as good a time as I did at the, uh, Breakfast with Santa, it was kind of interesting for me to go this year, simply because, um, I remember taking my kids, uh, when we first moved here in Wixom in nineteen ninety, and, uh, this time, uh, it was kind of interesting seeing, uh, Councilman Resnick and his kids that were in strollers, of course, the strollers then didn't look like these strollers they have now, and I, I think they're motorized or something, I'm not really sure, but, um, his kids and my kids were in strollers back then, and, and to see them now with their children and our grandchildren, it was kind of a neat experience, it was pretty cool. So, um, I, um, I know many of you, I think the Zieglers were there and some others, but it was just kinda cool to see, I hadn't witnessed that, uh, in a, in a number of years, to see where our kids have become, have their kids now, and they're enjoying that, uh, longstanding tradition here, and you did a great job, and, uh, I think Santa was pretty cool, uh, to see again, uh, the other day, so. And I think, uh, Tim, you're, you're, it was great, you put out that little blitz in the morning that you got the roads cleared up and, and, uh, salted, pre-salted, uh, with anticipation of the storm, we were getting that, so it was, it was great, it was good to see. So with that, um, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. So far. A motion by Councilman Smiley and seconded by Councilman Beagle, uh, to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Have a good evening, drive safely.